We'll call the February 6 Free Town Lakeville Regional School Committee to order. Can we have parole?
Sure. Steve Owen.
Here.
Gene Pott.
Here.
Sherri is that Robert Clark.
Yep.
Derek Gracia.
Here.
Laura Ramsden.
Here.
Will Sankowitz.
Here.
Steven Sylvia.
Here.
Anybody else recording the meeting?
Damon Times.
Welcome. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic and to the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, the one nation, and the God in whom the soul is given, and which has been established.
Anyone here for public participation? Welcome to our members in the audience, John. Acceptance of minutes for January 23.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Extension? Passes unanimously. Presentation to the school committee, Mr. Pacico, Mr. Wilson.
Erica Correa, the class of 2022, won the first ever Miss Free Town Outstanding Teen Award. She also won the Talent and Scholastic Awards, and congratulations to Erica for this achievement. Members of the ARHS Choir and Select Choir are preparing for this Friday's Music Fest at the Middle School, which will feature choirs from all five schools and will end with a concert starting at 1:00 p.m. Upon Aquit hosted its third annual Career in College Day. Over 50 local alumni professionals shared their career narratives with the students. Thank you to all the presenters and to Mrs. Cronin, who played a vital role in organizing this event. Upon Aquit Student Council will be hosting Dude Be Nice Week, an annual event based on being kind. The week will be full of engaging charitable events and will be capped off with this assembly with Mr. Petota giving a final motivational speech to the high schoolers before he retires. Upon Aquit's football coach is running a no-cost athletic development program after school. If you have any questions, please contact him, Mr. Fife. Sports are boys' basketball, eight-five, girls, thirteen-to-two, hockey, five-and-nine, wrestling, three-and-one, track, boys, one-to-five, girls, four-and-one, boys swim, five-and-five, and girls swim, six-and-four. And MCAS, near us, there will be MCAS tutoring for high school students free of charge. Math will be Thursdays, two-to-2:30. ELA will be on Mondays, two-to-2:30, and bio will be on Tuesday, two-to-three. You can contact guidance with any questions, comments, or concerns.
Mr. Marshall's environmental science classes sponsored an opt-out of Neat/Animal Products Day. There were 33 students and 21 staff members who successfully opted out. Students calculated that this one-day movement resulted in a savings of 458 pounds of carbon dioxide from entering the atmosphere and 59,000 gallons of water. Brittany LaRue, class of 2019, Parker Abbott, class of 2020, and Chase Miranda, class of 2021, are the first three Lakeville Fire Department interns. ARHS is excited about this new internship opportunity for students. Jillian Stinn, class of 2019, and John Assett, class of 2020, are Semester Two interns in our Life Skills classes. Sean Mendels, class of 2022, is our Semester Two Library Intern. John Garrett, class of 2019, won a Silver Key in the Boston Globe Scholastic Art and Writing Award Competition. Jonan's digital piece entitled "Pop" is posted on our site. And Mrs. Fontaine, class of 2019, guidance counselor, is pleased to report that 70% of our Grade 12 students have applied to one or more four-year colleges, and good news has been rolling in. On Thursday, March 21st, we will be hosting our first Bristol Palooza with Bristol Community College. Interested students will complete the application process, schedule placement testing, and begin work on the FASSA with support of Bristol staff. All interested students receive a detailed presentation as well as an application this
Thank you.
You also have your place, just a little pad for student council selling some pillow cases.
I had one, but I don't have a home room.
So do that. We can assign you a home room, Mrs. Oxenden, if I actually raise that, I could get some connections.
Yeah, you do.
Give you 10 bucks to them and they'll get you a pillow.
I had it. I pulled it out. I'm serious. I wanted a pillow.
Right? One of you guys could facilitate that?
Yeah.
Which came mine? Okay, I'll write my name on it. So here's my contribution.
Like a that. All right, moving on to old business, FY '19 budget update.
Short update tonight. Continue to monitor the budget. If anything arises, I'll let you know at our next meeting. But one, two items to bring to your attention. I spoke with the town of Lakeville to schedule us on the agenda for the board's left meeting, and we have two options in the month of February. They have a meeting on Monday night, the 11th, or on the 25th. So I wasn't sure for the board if there was a representative who wanted to go to talk about the state with interest with the board of selectmen, if one of those dates was more appealing than the other.
We would represent the committee, but I do know that the board has specifically asked that a school committee member. We just received those dates today, so I reckon we kind of thought you might lean towards the latter, just because of the timing.
Yes.
Those are the two dates. We literally, she literally spoke to the town administrator today, so.
Okay, we can circle back and then confirm that we may not have everybody in attendance there.
Well, we won't.
I just think representation would be.
Yeah, okay.
The second piece of good news is Bob, Suzie, and I, and I've as well met with Nate Darling today to go over the Green Communities grant. The board of selectmen of Lakeville had voted to allow whatever they receive in the grant monies this year to go to Upon Aquit High School. So up to $250,000 for an energy grant to be used this summer. We, when we did the energy audit, there were seven areas that they found that we could benefit, and so we'll use that audit to apply for the grant. So Bob and Nate are going to work together to submit that. We'll be submitting it in March.
The deadline's March. This is the background, the issue that the selectmen have shared, that we need to take those couple of initial steps. We did that, next step, and we met today. So that was a commitment made by the town of Lakeville that doesn't require both towns to be on board. Free Towns now don't take, so I think it was a generous commitment made by the town considering that it's a regional school piece and something I think we can even potentially expand at a later date to include the other schools and also potentially include both towns, but it's a great start in that meeting today.
And we're ironing out the details from a monitoring perspective, that once the work is complete, what we need to do with that, because I think we'll have to assume that task.
Correct.
Right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And Nate's been doing this for a few years now, and he has some great templates that he's willing to share with us, so we're really making great progress.
Awesome.
That's all I have for FY '19.
Any questions for Ms. Lopes on that FY '19? Seven new business. We have a ARHS donation.
I would recommend that the committee accept the donation for Amazon as presented. I can give you some background, or actually Ashley can share some background if you have any specific questions.
I think it's pretty clear, so we'll just go ahead with the motion as presented.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extension?
Mrs. Lopes is chuckling over here, because I was prepared, and we were prepared to answer the washing machine question. Somebody's going to ask that question, so let's get clarification. Is going for food service?
Yes.
Maintenance?
And student services.
Student services. They each have their own separate machines and items, and you can't, so.
Well, it's nice that Amazon's doing that.
We were ready. So even though you didn't ask a question, you still had to hear it anyway, so I gave you the background. Thank you.
Take donations.
We've actually, and Amazon has actually extended, and we've had some, I don't know if you guys were involved, and you were involved in one of the field trips to the site, so they're expanding, and so the partnership with the schools, at no cost, they're providing transportation for our students. You attended one of them?
Yeah. Great experience, yeah. It's great. And there's going to be another one that I think Mr. Rose is planning for this semester now.
Well, it is a giant facility. I don't think giant is the right word for it, so, but, and I'm assuming we'll do our thank you and all that.
I do want to point out, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, that one-third of the Amazon facility is in Free Town.
A giant portion of the building. No, it just, it goes on forever as you go down 24, so, but that's a welcome partnership for the community, which is great. Moving on to, I think, the meet of tonight's meeting, the FY '20 budget presentation. We'll get into seats and then.
Thank you, Ms. Owen.
Take a cookie on your way out.
School committee members are getting adjusted here to get a little better angle. If you have your, the notebook with you, it does in the first section labeled "presentation." Obviously, show you two of the slides, but if you have a little difficulty with those two slide pages, we're going to walk you through tonight. I promised at least a couple of the board members early on, we've tweaked and adjusted this presentation. You'll see kind of a form letter inside the notebook if you had an opportunity to open the binder up, kind of just a brief summary from me. It's my pleasure to present the FY '20 Superintendent's Recommended Budget as we typically have done a little bit later, and I think it's really been successful as a result. Doing a little bit later, we did get some numbers, I think, that more accurately reflect kind of where we're at, even though we're so early on in the process. So, Mr. Owen and Ms. Fox, what I'd like to do is maybe spend 15 minutes kind of walking through with the Director of Finance, Ashley Lopes, input as well in relation to the presentation, highlight some things for you, and then actually spend a couple of minutes highlighting some of the notebook, which we haven't done in the past, and I think we'll really kind of kickstart the whole process. So, without further ado, I'll get started. The first, the first thing I'd like to do, and it's recognized in my letter to you folks, is really to thank and recognize the stability and the leadership. We obviously, Mr. Sylvia is a new member, but the consistency and continuity of the leadership starts right with school committee. I appreciate your continued support, both in Free Town and Lakeville, and I'd be remiss if I didn't start off by acknowledging that as we start this process. The other group, obviously, this wouldn't happen without the leadership team that we have here. What an outstanding leadership team, with the backbone of some teachers and paraprofessionals and all the other personnel. Two individuals I'd like to just point out, it was recognized in the student report, is Mr. Petota is retiring this year after all his years of service to the district, and Mr. Suzie has the 24 years as well, is moving on to another professional opportunity. So they'll both be missed. We thank them for their time, but this is a recognition of principals and really an extension of their schools and staff that are part of this budget process. This slide sometimes is overlooked, and I want to please note when you have an opportunity, if not tonight, this is actually the tweaked, updated version of our vision statement. As we were working on our strategic plan, the leadership team has spent a lot of time in modifying and making some adjustments. So I think sometimes we just simply take for granted the budgets, the numbers, but so often we forget that in fact everything we do here, whether it be our mission, our vision, comes back to making sure that our priorities are reflected in the budget and our raise-the-bar mentality. So as I've said to you in previous years, this is my fifth year here in the district, the budget should be a reflection of our priorities, and so hopefully what you're going to see in the coming slides, and ultimately into the notebook, into the meet of the budget, is the fact that we're hopefully putting the necessary resources to those priorities. I constantly say it here to my leadership team, we're a good school district, and I'm not saying that in a critical way, but sometimes that can create a challenge because you grow complacent. And I'm hoping that as we really recalibrate the budget, and that's what I'm saying a lot tonight, in this advanced educational plan, you will see some opportunities for some significant growth throughout this process, even though we feel we really have a fiscally responsible budget. So some assumptions. This is a typical slide, so I'm going to go through maybe five or six slides that are typically the foundation to, that'll lead us to where, what the budget ultimately is for '20. State aid. So I guess the good news is we did get an increase in state aid, Chapter 70 initially, again, early on in the process. Those numbers can change, but then the flip side of that, you look to the next slide, we, our regional transportation is down, so it's pretty much a wash, right? I'd say it's level funded, you know, maybe $6,000 increase projected into the '20 budget. Circuit breaker is level funded at this time. I'm not too optimistic that that's going to change dramatically. All of the known contractual obligations, right, we're not, it's not a negotiation year, so we knew what our obligations were as we rolled in, and we could roll that into this budget. We know we have an increased DLL population, right, over 20 students now, first time in the district. We know that the health insurance increase right now, we can project very solidly based on the fact that we actually are presenting this after their board meeting, where in the past we presented it before, so we really were kind of forecasting and predicting. We feel pretty good about a 5% increase. We feel it's a conservative number, and certainly Ashley can speak to that as we kind of go through this process. And obviously, the other assumption is utility costs are continuing to trend up. So with that backdrop, the budget number for the Superintendent's Recommended Budget to kind of kickstart this process for school committee, ultimately in regional FinCom in the two towns, is a $40,120,610 budget. From last year's voted budget, which was $38,273,474, it increased to $1.8 million, actually $1,847,136, a percentage increase, great start going here from my perspective, of 4.83%. So that's a budget increase from last year's budget of 4.83. Does that mean for the towns? Now, the townies here, but typically people want to know what's the assessment, right? What's the, what's the cost to each town? We have that broken down. Typically, we've kind of provided you something that you couldn't read, the whole assessment sheet, that's in there in your backup. We tried to highlight that here. It's a, it's an increase in Free Town of 4.89%, increase on the assessment, and an increase on the assessment of 5.39% in the dollar amounts there are shown. Obviously, regional FinCom and further groups are going to have more questions and conversation in relation to that, and we have the backup to each of these slides in your notebook. Looking at the budget increase, that 4.83, we tried to break it down a little bit, but also make it a real user-friendly approach, and we think we certainly have accomplished that. I give, you know, Ashley, and I'll say this a couple of times, a tremendous amount of credit, really kind of taking what has been a pattern of transparency for the district and making it a much more detailed, yet user-friendly approach, and I think this is an example of that, right? We've taken the breakdown. It's primarily the top three when you look at the dollar amounts, right? It's salaries, which isn't atypical for an organization that has over 400 employees. You see a 2.3%. You got the insurance increase, almost $300,000. Then you have transportation. That includes both regular education and special education, and then you have some of the other items that are listed there, and you see actually some being backed out when you get into debt and technology and so forth. But that's, that's what brings us to that $1.8 million number. How is this compared to my four previous budgets, or the last five years? I think it's real comparable in relation to what has been voted on and approved previous, right? Our budget this year, or the budget presentation tonight is for 4.83%. The past two years, we were under 3%, 2.2, 2.56, but in '16, '17, we were right in the ballpark that we are here tonight. And I think part of what I want to remind folks about and why this number in '20 looks more like '16, '17, '16 and '17 were years that we were forced to also recalibrate here in the district to address some staffing and some issues and some cuts. So I think you're going to see that reflected here in some actual costs. Again, that's the budget increase, not the assessment increase. That was that previous number. So employee salaries, that large ticket item, that number, that $911,000, what does that number reflect? Why the significant change? It takes into account all the contractual obligations as it relates to step and schedule increases for all employees, a 2% collective bargaining increase across the board for all those groups and non-aligned. Retirements, it took into account the most recent minimum wage increase and adjustments we had to make. Takes into account that we add an additional English language learning teacher to address that population. Speak to that a little bit later on in the presentation. A middle school specialist, that's a related arts teacher. It is focused right now on adding an additional section and address some, some real deficiencies in class size, right? We have some real high numbers, but it's also a programmatic decision. We're looking at most likely a wellness, physical education, teaching position, so, and we'll go into a little bit more details, but that number's reflected in the line 11. It's also a middle school special education, special education teacher included, and a library media specialist at the intermediate school. So we've taken that next step where we addressed the need at Free Town Elementary School for an equity issue as it relates to Swanson. Now we're taking it to the upper grade levels with the media specialists at the intermediate school. All of those numbers, all of these items are reflected. Looking a little bit more at staffing, I think it's important where it looks like there's additions. Well, there's really not additions overall when you look. So let's take the left-hand side. So as I've already referenced, we've got a .5 teacher. We have one staff member right now doing it all for English language learning. We're looking for .5 to address some additional supports and some deficiencies that Dr. Correa has referenced previous. The middle school specialist will bring the number. So keep in mind academically at the middle school, there are 10 sections, so you divide a 200 number by 10, you get class size of 20 academically. In the related arts areas and specialists, it's been eight. And it wasn't always eight. For those of you that hear sometime, and I know some of you board members are here, you had this. So we're really, when I say recalibrate, we're bringing back what, what was lost some time ago as it relates, and that will address class size, but also address some programs, the middle school specialists. The special education teachers, it's necessary. We've made a concerted effort in the district to take out of district students and bring them back for programs. You can't bring the kids back if you don't provide the supports. Let me rephrase that. You can bring them back, but they won't be successful long-term, right? The initial excitement of bringing students back if you don't have the supports, and I can certainly have Liz Curlin speak to that in more detail, but it's, it's something that's necessary and really required to meet the needs of the students in the special education programs at the middle level. And why that's the case and maybe why isn't happening now, we're seeing those students graduate up from the elementary school, middle school, where we had programs, and we're creating programs for those students in the middle school. And then lastly, the intermediate school, media specialist is a full-time position, so the adds overall district-wide, again, real modest. This is a recalibration. It's a level service budget, 3.5. We were able to do that and actually reduce some teaching positions there, not reduce individuals, but looking at attrition and retirement. We're going to reassign a high school special education teacher. The numbers just don't dictate that. So some of these cuts that you see at the, at the high school, I want to make sure that you understand the principal's part of the process. It's a shift in assignment based on needs of students. So we just don't, we have a population either graduating or phasing, or moving out, and so the need is shifting there. Spend some more time. I know, I know, tonight's not that night. This will kickstart. I know a lot of conversations where you're going to want principals and directors to be part of that process. But right-hand side, three fewer paraprofessionals, two fewer classroom teachers at grades, and it's a significant piece that I don't want to underscore. This is, this, these are, these are decisions, when you look big picture, at trying to keep a budget fiscally responsible. So where we have had 10 classroom teachers, we have two retirements. What we're calling for in fifth grade specifically is eight sections of classroom teachers to address. So will class size go up in at least one grade at the intermediate school? Yes, based on the cut budget that I present to you tonight. But it also reflects what our sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade teachers look like, and it's something that has been a challenge, and we kind of balance that with getting the media specialist and the supports that we can, we can bring at that level. But I would be remiss if I said, listen, that some of the reductions that are being made, principals were signing up for this. You know, keep in mind, as you get this budget, and you'll see it in the backup, you'll see actually done real well, there'll be areas that where it says projects or priorities that were not funded, but that were presented by the principal, you'll see that reflected in the backup to that. And as a result of potentially hiring a media specialist, full-time teacher, we don't have the need for the current part-time library media specialist, which kind of goes hand in hand to those last two in place. Again, I recognize that school committee members, I'm trying to keep the overview brief tonight, ready to roll up your sleeves and kind of jump at some of these items specifically, and that's really kind of, this kickstarts the process, and I just want to be clear to people that in order to get the number where we're at today, we've already had to make some real challenging decisions, look at our vision, look at our priorities, and bring forward a budget that in fact makes some of those adjustments, and involve staff through their principals and directors and so forth. So the next few slides, I'm actually going to turn over, I could have turned over most of the presentation actually to the Director of Finance, who's kind of done the background to this, but the next, you know, seven or eight slides, I'm just going to have Ashley kind of walk you through some of those details, then we'll, we'll probably just touch upon a couple of the slides, the graphs that were there, and then do a wrap-up, and then we'll jump a little bit into the budget presentation for tonight.
Our first slide is health insurance. As you can see right now, it's a 5.15 increase. This is actually a lot better than we thought we were going to be coming in initially. Our vendor has had their board meeting. They come out that the cap would be at 5% for their active insurance, so they're waiting to hear, or we're waiting to hear back from them what the exact number is, but we know it will not be more than 5%. So we're very confident in this number for going forward. Transportation. As you saw, there is an increase in regular transportation for next year. We did reduce two buses. However, there is a contractual increase for next year. That's approximately 3.5%. And then that 106 also includes the fuel surcharge that we receive every year, which is captured in that number. And then special education, you'll see it'll be an increase of $101,000, I'm sorry, $161,000. Unfortunately, it looks like '19, we had this reduction. The line itself was underfunded this year, and as we've been talking about, we are recalibrating this budget. So to bring it up to what the actual funding will need to be, it will be that increase.
Again, these are clear slides that we know we're going to be spending some more time and drilling down a little bit with some more detail.
Capital debt payments. We've talked about that this through the course of the fall. As you'll see, our debt is reducing year over year. This includes school, track, fast sports, grades, and middle school. It's there every year. The next slide is special education. This is a little bit different than what the presentation has shown in years past. That first column right there is the all-in special education total, and includes the general fund, circuit breaker, and grants in the preschool fund. The two things to note on this slide is circuit breaker grants are funded by the state, and so those could change going forward. As you can see, our circuit breaker numbers, for instance, have fluctuated over the last four years. The general fund number you'll see in detail in your budget book, and same thing with the grants. This next slide is our October 1 enrollment for special education. You can see the trend going up right now from pre-K to five every year. We're getting a few more students in special education, and that is moving forward as we talk about the middle school separate teacher. As we identify these children in the lower grades, we're moving them through, and to keep them in district, we need to supply those supports. So we're just thinking about programming going forward. You can see a reduction, though, as we look at our high school, nine through 12, and that is our support served place, we're being able to identify these students and help them transition in the district. The English Language Education Program, as we talked about this fall when Marlene was here, we have now 21 students in the district receiving direct services. We only have one teacher currently doing all of this work. That one teacher also has supplies, is about approximately $2,000, and this program is growing, as we've seen over the last few years. So the request is to have another .5 teacher and a few thousand dollars in additional contractual services and supplies. You'll remember this graph from Marlene's presentation. As you can see, the total number serviced of kids here in the district is going up, and we have more kids in the program. These numbers were only as of January 28, so we still have half the school year to go, and we don't know how many more kids will be screened or how many more students will be in this program. Our E&amp;D account, as you can see the trend from 2011, when we've had to use E&amp;D, it's because of special education, and you'll see those years in about FY '17 and FY '18, we were at $80,000. We are now trending upward. Our hope every year is to add a little bit more to E&amp;D, and my office and also administration has been very forthcoming with what our projections are with E&amp;D going forward.
So the next, I want to say maybe half dozen or maybe more than that, slides, this is slide number 21, if you can see the number on the Aurora handle. This is really just a historical perspective. I think very often the towns are sharing with us this idea that the enrollment's trending down, and I guess for some time it was. The line, by the way, if you can't see that denotes when, when the school district regionalized. The line, by the way, if you can't see that denotes when the school district regionalized. So that's when we became regionalized. And we did have a trend for some time. Obviously, the high point way back in 2007, low point in 2016. But we've pretty much balanced that off right now, last few years. And I think it's important, significant to note, that we do not see a decline or decreasing enrollment. And this does even quite candidly take into account some of the aggressive revenue sources the towns are looking for as far as housing and so forth. So I think we need to really kind of reexamine this. The slide has really done one, because we're always asked to historically give some enrollment. Well, this certainly does it. You have it for the last 20 years. But more importantly, really wants to get away from this idea that we continue to trend and spiral down. That's simply not true. This is just the graph showing the two towns. Again, you see it kind of leveling off for both Freetown and Lakeville. Lakeville's the top line. This is school choice, pretty significant. I mean, when we talk about upgrades in security, highlights, textbook increases, the idea that we're looking at filling spaces, well, you can see, we clearly have made a concerted effort here in the district to keep the priority of maintaining our credibility around class size, but also where possible, expand. You'll be taking a vote, hopefully with my recommendation on March 6th, to remain a school choice district. And I'll outline a very conservative list of grades. I'm giving you kind of hint or a preview of what that will look like. But you can identify additional spaces and slots. I'll be primarily looking at the secondary level, not the elementary level this year when I make that recommendation. Currently, we actually have more than 70 students. 70 students is the October 1 number. We recently had, so without going into too much detail, but just to give you an example how these numbers can fluctuate, sometimes a town official or somebody will ask you a question. We had two students in a family that just moved out of district. And so they want to stay in the district, so they'll fill in an application. Ideally, great circumstance. These are students who are successful currently in school, same family, are moving out of town, but want to remain students here in our district. They now become school choice students. We get prorated that dollar amount. We don't get the full amount for the year for when they enroll, but it does change the number a little bit. Likewise, you can have a student move out as well. But once students are involved or entered into school choice, they remain there. I'm just letting you know that the number, you will not see a dramatic, we haven't budgeted, by the way, anything beyond the current 70 in the budget presentation that you have today. I am going to be requesting some additional seats of approximately 20, 21 seats at the secondary. We have not built that potential revenue into this budget to date. We've got some time to take a look at that. Need to be conservative, especially at the secondary level, because a lot of times historically we haven't filled those slots. But that's the school choice enrollment data sheet. The next, I'll take a quick glance, maybe seven or eight slides, are simply an FY '18, '19, projected 20 enrollment or class size number. And can you see the chart there, whether it be an average of 5, 10, 15, or 20? And this is Assam City, and this is based on October 1's number. Again, you have to take a close look at this and sometimes examine it. You've got to take 19's number and carry it over one grade, right, to take a look at what that will look like. That slide is Assam City, Freetown Elementary School is broken down by school. It's broken down obviously in more detail in your packets, intermediate school, the middle school, and high school. Keep in mind that at the middle school, that last slide, it didn't show you the related arts piece. That was an academic-sized section. So we'll have to go back there if there's a question regarding the specialist's position. High school. And now, kind of taking the next steps, as I promised, at least attempted to promise early on, I would try to modify the presentation a little bit. It's typically been about a 35-minute lecture, which I know has been real riveting, refraining from sarcasm for you folks. But we were able to get the packet to you a couple days early to at least glance at the presentation. You haven't had a chance to look at the wealth of information that's here. But for the community at large, and what really kickstarts this is, well, this presentation will go on the website. It will be on the website tomorrow morning, be available. I'll make reference to it in Super Tense Corner, and it will allow the community to start hopefully buying into and supporting the fact that we're looking at security upgrades, that we're looking for textbooks, that we are looking for some staffing piece, but we've attempted to prioritize that. Does it contain everything? So what you don't see here in the slide, and it's intentional, is we typically said, here's a slide that shows what's not in the budget. We didn't put that in the presentation format. You have that in your backup though, and it's really detailed and shown for you. If there's a principal who asks for a specific item of support and it hasn't been included, you'll see that highlighted, and I'll have Ashley kind of reference that in the section. So it's going to be there. It's just going to come in a later conversation for us, just not tonight. Going back over and highlighting, and really for the community as much as anything, and for obviously the camera and Lake Cam that's here to get the word out, the budget, Super Tense recommends your budget is for $40,120,610. It's an increase of $1,847,136, a 4.83% increase, which really leads to rolling up our sleeves and what's next, right? This kickstarts the budget process. We already made an adjustment to the previous slide that you looked at. We originally had a regional FinCom scheduled for next Thursday. That's been rescheduled. So this slide here, which has also been updated in your notebook, reflects the next regional FinCom meeting, which is February 28. The multiple opportunities for the school committee to have open conversations, right? We have two school committee meetings scheduled in March, the 6th and the 20th. We've set a placeholder for a potential weekend session with regional FinCom, a joint meeting in March. Obviously, we can make some adjustments on that. We've had some success, and we've also not had some success depending on attendance that we can talk about. I think the fact that the regional FinCom is really making necessary recommendations and through Derek's work and Steve's work and with the support of the committee, I'm not so sure the joint meeting is going to be required. I think what was missing is when that group wasn't functioning as effectively as it has been these last few years, we felt the need to bring everybody in. But I mean, time will tell depending on the gap potentially to where our budgets at. Public hearing, so that meets all the statute requirements, right? To be sure that we have a public hearing well in advance of town meetings. So it's April 3rd, and we'll have to put notice out and so forth. And then regional FinCom, we're hoping for a recommendation shortly after that public hearing, which is consistent. You want to have the public hearing and allow to hear the public, hopefully if they come out, what questions they have, and then make a recommendation, ultimately a school committee vote. So that is all in your packet. The one thing I would ask Ms. Stone and Mrs. Fox, if I may, is I just wanted Ashley to kind of just walk you through a couple of maybe differences to what you've had in the past in relation. General format's the same, but I have to tell you, just in my five years, much more user-friendly, and I think it's really going to generate some real specific detailed conversations. You know, my predecessors, I thank the Fred Bakers and Chris Nashes and those people, because they really kickstarted the transparency in the board. We've hopefully taken it to another level, and really, I think you're going to see that reflected. And I give Ashley my directors and Nace help as well supporting. But Ashley, can you kind of just walk through and maybe just highlight a couple of sections that they might want to?
Sure. To start, in tab two is the assessment sheet. We didn't put it on the slides this year. It was kind of plumpy before. It's a one-page here. You can look through it, and you'll have all the information you need. As we move forward, in tab three, I've included an introduction this year to talk a little bit more about our district, our enrollment, who our board, the people on our board are, just to give people a little bit more flavor of the district. As you move on to tab four, you'll see a high-level general fund summary by each of the units. You'll see FY '17, '18, and '19, and then the projected 20 budget. You'll see the dollar changes, the percentage change there. As we move on, tab five, all the way through 13, are each of our units. So if you want to start at the district-wide, you'll see a brief narrative about central office. You'll see our recent accomplishments for this year as you turn to page two. You'll see the FTEs in our office, and then you'll see all of the changes from FY '19 budget. It might be small, they might be large, as we talked about as a recalibration of the budget. So as we talked about previous meetings, some of those line items you've had may have gone into the red in prior years. It was offset by another account in the budget, but this year I've tried really hard to align all of the salaries to the lines they actually should be in. Same thing with supplies. So it's a more true budget for each of the line items.
So as Ashley's pointing out, if you're looking at five, which is district-wide, where Marlene's throughout all the remaining sections, five through facilities, is this kind of detail and kind of a missing piece sometimes for school committee members? You didn't get to sit in and hear what the principal had to say or the director had to say. Ashley's attempted to capture that. I think she's captured it real well and also highlight those changes in a real simple fashion and overview to see. So you see the changes from '19. You'll see that, I know she'll point it out with some of the schools. It allows you to kind of maybe see a little bit behind the scenes of how that conversation went with the principal, through their staff, with the business director, and certainly myself.
On each of these narrative portions of the budget, you'll see a section that says proposed change is not funded. And those are the items that have come forward to us that were not included in the FY '20 budget. And those are throughout those sections. If you look at one of the schools, I'll look at AES for example, you'll see some facts about this school. You'll see enrollment, class size, and FTEs in those buildings. So a little bit more detail about the school, a slightly different format that you've seen from prior years. As we keep going, there's some information about capital. This is that long-term, five-year capital plan that we've been discussing, both in regional FinCom and here at school committee. And tab 15 is just something that you didn't see in prior years. This is the grant detail that we have here. So all of the grants that we've received from FY '17 through '20, the projected 20, are here. The next tab are all of our revolving funds. So the budget is not just made up with the general fund. We do have additional funding sources with the grants, the revolving funds, and that detail is included in your packet for your review. '17 are the historical enrollment charts that we've looked at throughout the course of the fall. '18 is class size charts. '19 is sectioning charts, just things that you can glance out for more reference. And then 21 is something different that you haven't seen before. This is our core people expenditure. This is from the state. Every year, we have to complete an end-of-year report, and then the state takes all the information and puts it into a chart format. And so with that, the state also releases districts that are comparable to us. So what I did is I took all of those districts and I laid it out in a chart format for you so you could review Freetown, Lakeville versus what the state believes are comparative districts. So that's for FY '17, once we get the information of FY '18.
And that was tab 21.
And then the rest of the packet are just our agreements, the original agreement and the lease agreements.
So the regional agreement has always been part of the packet. It was put in there. You'll see, it looks a little out of sequence from some of the updates we've had. That's the original agreement. Director came to me more than one occasion to be sure, because it wasn't quite fitting in necessarily with how nice the format looked previous to that, but I felt it was necessary to at least continue to include the regional agreement. I do think that the other pieces that I think are significant though, 23, so those are the two lease agreements for the two towns for the two elementary schools. Lakeville for Assam City, Freetown for Freetown Elementary School. Please note, we're trying to, we still have yet to have Freetown's lease agreement signed by the Board of Selectmen. It's on their agenda. I'm actually going to the March 6 meeting. It goes back to 2014. We actually, so I met with the town administrator and said, can you place this on a future agenda? And he looked back when he got the document. He said, no, you sent me the 2014 request. I said, yes, I know. It has never been signed. He didn't know the background. I said, so I'm planning to attend the March 6 Board of Selectmen meeting to see if that's addressed. Oh, by the way, I did add lease space, rental space, and the security donation. As I figure if I'm going to go, I might as well add a couple of other items that I'm there. So I actually forwarded those documents just as a side note. And then the last document on page 24, if we're going to sublease those, it says South Coast, because that's the only group, entity currently that's doing that. It just shows you that what those subleases look like, right? We have two rooms, classrooms at the intermediate school, where we see the direct funding for that $30,000. It comes right into the regional school district. And then the three classroom spaces that are rented at Freetown Elementary School, $60,000 go directly to the town of Freetown. Actually, that check is being cut this week, and I asked the executive director when that happens, which it's supposed to be this week. I got like a copy of that. I'm actually going to a board meeting tomorrow so I can have that in advance, because I think regional FinCom, we've had some conversations about exploring about ways of making sure that that money comes back to the school. I don't mean the dollar amount, but in the form of some, you know, support, whether it be security or in some way goes back in some way. And I think they would certainly be open to that, but it's kind of a new piece of information. So I know in a half-hour timeframe, we've placed a lot. We have the same notebooks available for town officials from regional FinCom. So we have those available for them. The presentation will be obviously available to the entire community. And so I think, as I've said, this kind of brief summary and new detail, this new look is a recalibration of the budget. It is not an extremely generous budget, but we're also trying to be fiscally responsible here. And I think there's going to be some tough conversations we need to have in the coming months. But I do think it is a budget that should lead itself to some very positive conversations and collaboration with the towns. We felt strongly that we didn't want to come in with a number that led to not even a conversation starter as it relates. And obviously, things can happen at the state level that can dictate some changes. Although, starting a little bit later, I should probably even stop saying that, because I'm not so sure this is late, right? It's just later than we've done in the past. I think it just shows that we were able to really make some adjustments in this presentation for you that sometimes we were rolling out some real projections when we rolled it out in January. So, Ashley, is there anything else that you want to add? Ms. Stone or Mrs. Fox, are there any? I know in the past that the practice has been, thank you, we'll take a look at this. And I would still probably encourage you to do that, because you haven't really had a chance to look at the background. But we may want to have a conversation about next steps and facilitating questions to the chair or vice chair and kind of how you want to approach that.
Definitely. I will just say that obviously just seeing for the first time, the amount of information that's in here and still being an inch less thick, I think is great. This goes along with the transparency aspect of the backup associated with that. So I do thank you in putting that together. Yeah, I do think that there's some next steps that we should outline with that. I have some just high-level questions, but I'll open up to the board if there's any particular questions here. Outside of next steps, I would request that as soon as possible that we actually send the presentation to the two town administrators, so that way they at least have that. And we could also set the expectation that the full backup will be presented to the town officials on the regional FinCom on the 28th, right? So just so that they're aware of that aspect of it too.
We will communicate that through both town administrators. We actually brought a few of the booklets in anticipation that somebody might be in the audience. It turns out that they weren't, just to be sure that they, but we'll...
I just think staying ahead of the game and let's get the towns...
Yep. And so they will be receiving, because that's often been a question, we were trying to synthesize a little bit, they'll be receiving all the same information you folks will have. So there'll be no discrepancies there in relation to us providing as transparent as possible the info. We could take care of that.
I will start off one question for you. How would you describe this? And you and I have had this conversation several years, is do you deem this as a level service budget?
I do. I do. I know, Stephen, you and I have had this conversation. The term I kind of use is that tweaking of recalibration though. I think, I don't want to, I know I've said it multiple times, I want to emphasize that what we're looking at are actual costs and the reality of what special education is costing us, for example. Has this district always embraced and handled those? Yes, but we've always done it by just pulling from somewhere else, right? So we always knew we had a little additional money potentially. Oh, we made sure that we didn't do five maintenance projects because we would move that money. This budget's not saying that. This is saying what are the real costs associated, and that's what's encouraging, not necessarily just for FY '20. I think this is a budget that really sets us up well for '21 and '22, because then when we start identifying and prioritizing, kind of a long-winded answer though, Steve, it is a recalibration. It is a level service budget. There were some tough decisions made at the table already before they even got to you in relation to looking at class size and making some adjustments and not replacing classroom teachers and so forth. But at the same time, we looked at some of the other priorities that we have, the English Language Learner Program, the fact that we've been talking and talking about the class size at the middle school and specialists and special education. We've been talking about media specialists for how long now? We did that at Freetown Elementary. When do you finally take that leap? We've addressed textbooks and AP books in this budget. Are we there yet? No, but we've got a plan for that. So I think that's my kind of long-winded answer, Steve. I think the next steps will be, all the directors will be here, obviously, at the next meeting. And then subsequently, the principals will be here at that March meeting, March 20th meeting, where they'll be talking about school improvements, but to talk about the budget. And if need be, we obviously can bring them in sooner than that. But that's, I tried to capture that in the summary that I gave you, kind of in that one page piece to kind of share with you what my thoughts are on this budget. And, you know, would I have liked to seen a few more items? Yeah, that goes back to that vision and priorities though and said, what would that number look like, you know? And would it be a realistic number, right? You know, I've always tried to pride myself in my time here is to not put out something that makes you guys the bad guys, wear black and say, listen, here's a 12% budget, this would be great, but we know it's not reasonable. And then you start, I don't think that, what I do, what I would say though is look closely at the projects for those items not funded in each of the sections. And that will really be the telling. You knows those are the conversations. Those are the last conversations that we had with directors or principals in relation to making some adjustments. The leadership team has seen this in its entirety. They've been, they're well aware of it, part of the process.
Yeah, we have that slide as far as next steps and we've talked about this at Regional FinCom and we've put that date of April 11th that we are looking to have a, some sort of budget recommendation, just like we did last year, so that we could present that to the full committee again, just a recommendation. So, and we'll start that process on the 28th. Questions from the full com-
I do have one and I don't think anybody's going to have a great answer, but I guess I'm a little disappointed with the chapter seventy increase, given the governor's $1.2 billion five-year plan to augment after four years of a committee study sitting idle on a shelf, that we see $56,000, I think is disconcerting to say the least. I get it that it's going to hit the urban districts where there's certainly a need, but that shouldn't discount the need suburban communities have as well. And we work very hard. Some of the things that I saw are out that I have to study in here are a concern. And that coupled with the fact that this incredible increase we're supposedly getting is not going to be reflected in our budget.
If you want to comment on chapter seven, I agree. We're in agreement there.
And we did. We received the $20 per student addition for next year.
But the big monies aren't coming to districts. And I don't see it, even with the, even with the adjustment projections don't show a lot of promise for significant monies coming from the state. On top of that, folks, not to be doom and gloom, the regional transportation number, again, a motivation incentive, right, to regionalize, that number's not being met either. So, but obviously, those are assumptions that we have to make, obviously, that because we can't make, we can't.
No, I'm not saying that's not where I'm going. I'm glad you said regional transportation because not only was that an incentive, but there was also additional legislation that was enacted that if you touch the regional budget, you can't do this to transportation. And that's all fallen off too. So it's just, I get it, there are limited resources at the state level as well. You know, ours is a $40 million budget, theirs is a $42 billion. But, and I'm glad to see some increase, oh my gosh, some increase in education funding chapter seventy-eight. But, you know, we have a lot more to go, I think, on the part of the state to support what these two towns so valiantly try to accomplish.
But I think there's some work that we need to do as a committee as it relates to circuit breaker, right? How do we, right now, we're spending as soon as we get it, right? Is there a better way? Is there a smarter way? You know, we talked about let's work smarter, not work harder. So I think there's some discussions in parallel of this budget, you know, that may hurt a little bit, that we may need to give us some long-term success. So that's some of the things we have, when do we use it? How do we use it? What have you said? Any other questions for Mr. Gray?
All right, a couple of things, a couple of comments, and then one point for me. Can this get to Regional FinCom ahead of that meeting so we can get going at that meeting? And people have had it to digest. I'd rather not be there at the meeting and like here, and we're already going to be at February 28th. Let's let people dig in, get this as soon as they can, so on, that 28th, we can have some constructive dialogue. I don't know if anyone has any problem with that.
We can take care of that.
The time's going to be shortened with that.
Facilitate, either them coming or us.
Very, very nicely done in the little that I've looked at. This is, this is great. Great work. Nice job, Ashley. Nice job, Rick. In the little that I looked at, here's what I dissect as a concern to me. And this is for the committee. We talk about class size being our number one priority. I see us in a couple of areas having some problems on that right now. I'm glad you came right out and said it, Rick. Hey, you knew the committee was going to have some issues with that. That's, that's one issue that I have, that I see some glaring issues. Coupled with the fact that our special education population is growing at the lower levels, I have a concern that those classroom sizes are what they're at. So I would love this committee to dig in along with FinCom to, and the towns, to figure out how we resolve that because I think that's an ingredient for problems right now. So I think we need to stick to our number one priority. Our number one priority was classroom size. We've said that all along. We're, we're on the cusp of not meeting our priority here. So I think, in a couple of areas, and there's, I can appreciate the balancing act that needs to be done from a financing area with the two towns. But I got to believe that there's other ways that we can tackle this because this is going to be a challenging environment in some classrooms that I can foresee.
Steve, I'm just, I'm discounting if there are other members, but if I may, just another piece to deviate is keep in mind, we haven't included capital into this because the conversation is being separate that from the operational budget. So although capital, the plan is listed here, we also need to roll up our sleeves and decide potentially looking at those plans, whether they're going to be separate articles in the spring or fall. So, you know, just note that in the past, we've tried to roll some of capital into the operational, really not a great long-term strategy. And I think we're all in agreement about that, but I just wanted that to be noted very often. You know, we've done the small project and maintenance stuff. That's included here and you'll see those lines reflected. But we'll still need to have at some future date, a conversation about capital and potentially looking at the towns. And I know at Regional FinCom, we've already kind of kickstarted that, so I just want to make that note.
Any other questions from?
This is great though.
Yeah, I just have a few pieces here. At the summary level, the special ed teacher at the middle school.
Yes.
Are we anticipating bringing more students back from out of district? Or is that just to supplement what we've already done in bringing the students back?
We believe there's a dire need there now. And so we're addressing a need and we have a short-term plan in place addressing the need of students. So the quick answer is that it is actually addressing our current population at the middle school.
Got it.
Will we see a continued, a continuation of additional students? Yes. But this specific teacher is actually addressing current need.
But will that allow us to potentially bring back other students?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Yeah, once the program has been established and in place, we certainly will have that opportunity. We'll have students coming up from the intermediate school, make some adjustments. But this, this teaching specifically is set up to address the needs of students. Will it create some more capacity to your point? Yes.
Okay. Also, on page six, not slide six, but page six, I just want to make sure I heard this. When you talked about the high school special education and the high school paraprofessionals, those are just being put into other positions in the district, right? Did I hear that correctly?
So the high school special education teacher would be moving to a middle school position?
So they would, they're the direct offset of that. Okay.
Right.
Got it. Okay. I'd like to dig in a little bit more, not necessarily today, but the, I think when we talked about Van Poel and the special ed transportation, the thought is there would be some savings along with that. It doesn't look like in year one, right? What is the plan? I think that was eventually where that was the decision coming into play. So more, I think, a detailed conversation as far as that planning. We're going for a half of a teacher for ELL. Is there going to be a challenge of trying to find a part-time teacher to fill that role? Or it's such a specialized piece, I don't know if we're running, going to run into a challenge of finding a half of a resource for that.
Potentially. Yeah, potentially. But I mean, the reality is that we feel that it does meet the needs of our current population and even projected population at this time.
Got it. Just to confirm that this, on page 10, the E and D, that's our balance. That's not what we spend out of E and D, correct?
That's our balance.
Okay. I know we've talked about this in the past, on page 11, the district enrollment. I really would like to get that high needs number in there, right? We talk about enrollment dipping overall, but our high needs category, which is more services, which is impacting the budget, should be presented in some way.
The struggle that I would agree is, is the reporting for that has started so late for the state. So we could have it, but it would be really skewed towards the last. I'm not saying we shouldn't start doing it.
But at least give us a couple of years of, and especially where it has increased over the last couple of years.
Absolutely.
So if you look in section 12 under student services, there's a little bit more detailed about our student service population. Right, you can look through that you may not have seen in prior years with this state enrollment information as of October 1st.
Got it. Okay. And then I'm glad you brought up the school choice because obviously, we budgeted a higher number than what we actually have. So that is lost revenue in our current budget. So I'm happy that we're sort of being conservative as far as the number that we're doing in this budget because I think we're still five under what we originally allocated for this year.
Three now. Yes, but pro-rated, but yes, you're right. It was, we had, we had built a budget and it's part of the, I think, the premise behind us being reluctant to increase that as potential revenue this early on in the process, right? We don't want to simply assume we're going to get 20 more students. And you're right, where we had projected and built into this assessment to the town, 75. We currently, we're at 70, you're right, five, with two new students moved over. And that's only an even out adjustment.
Again, I know it's partial year type thing, so we don't get the full rebate. Before we move on, any other questions?
Yeah, just a comment and the theme of transparency. Thank you to you and the leadership team. I remember thinking when I got appointed, if there was a resource that I could look through to get a real snapshot of the whole district, this is absolutely it. So thank you for that. Like Derek mentioned though, in a student-centered budget, I do have concerns about some of the decisions relative to class sizes specifically in one area.
Yep.
That said, I'd be also curious to learn more about the EL model because a .5 teacher in that area, whether it's push-in, push-out, hybrid model, I'd like to learn more about what that could potentially look like. But there does seem to be a significant jump in a particular class size in one area that, you know, would be part of our conversation moving forward.
I tried to beat everybody to the punch. If you saw my presentation, referenced it, right, at the intermediate school, we have a reduction in a couple of classroom teachers. And that's the conversation that I appreciate. We're not surprised. Principal has been part of the conversation, is supportive of the budget as presented. Let me make sure everybody heard what that said. Supports the budget as presented, but what principal?
Right.
Is going to support a reduction of two classroom teachers? I don't know any. I mean, Steve, maybe you do. I don't see that happening. So I, so when we looked at the prior, we talked about scheduling. I mean, I think one of the things that has to be examined that kind of really gets deeper than maybe even this book can do is, is the team approach? Is the schedule correct? Are the supports, what else can we do? We have always simply said, this is the way we've done it and so we need this number. I don't think we should accept that as the final answer. And that's part of the conversation we need to take a look at because there are multiple ways, as you certainly know, to address fourth and fifth grade. But again, being quite candid, obviously, we made those, we made that adjustment, some tough calls when we looked at the initial numbers. The initial budget numbers that you can imagine, Ashley and I took a look at after we went through all this were seven, eight, nine percent increases. And we just felt that we were doing a disservice to everybody to make an assumption that we could carry that. Again, through the hard work here, if we make some adjustments, listen, if we bring in some more revenue, these are all conversations we can have and that's really part of the process. You're not going to get any pushback from any administrators saying, we think we should have more classroom teachers in there and reducing class size, right? Who's pushing that? Myself included. But we also have heard over and over again, that there's some scheduling quirks here and there's some other supports that we can provide. So, but duly noted, right? Not ducking that at all. That was a, we saw that as a, as an issue, special education remains a conversation we need to not only have the director, but the principal's part of.
Just one further thing, in the snapshot of significant changes and changes not funded, I think is very helpful too, because it sort of maps out the priorities, which is great.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's broken down by line item there and in most instances. And I think helps you, you know, take a look at supplies and textbooks and see where some shifts have been made.
Any other questions or comments? There's a lot to this. I'd like to make a suggestion that, you know, $40 million budget in a lot of sections and not a lot of time as far as that. What I'd like to do is, obviously, there's going to be a lot of discussions at the Regional FinCom. If there is any questions that the board members want to bring to Regional FinCom, we're more than happy to have you there or we can send them through Derek or myself. But for us as a body, what I'd like to propose is for our next meeting, which is March 6th, let's focus on the school sections of the budget, those five sections, the building piece to that. Let's get our questions and answers through that piece so that way everyone's on board and can ultimately make a decision on that. If there are no questions, great, but maybe if we tackle them in different pieces over the next few meetings, I think we can actually have a good conversation instead of just saying, here's the budget, let's open it up across the board. Does that make sense? Okay. So for us, we'll focus on, at our March 6th meeting, and I think by then, we'll have some feedback from the Regional FinCom as well as far as the temperature at that point. Again, this is a starting point, you know what I mean? And it's a long game through June. So, so let's, for our March 6th meeting, let's be prepared for us to do the research and looking at the data for the five schools, which is the section five through.
Ten.
Ten.
Yep.
For my math. And obviously, the administration has said very much, I mean, if there are any questions even to go in and ask them, help it, but.
So, you know, I'll hear from the chair and vice chair. As the next couple of weeks play out, if in fact, you feel there's a need to have the administrators present at that meeting. We had originally scheduled, recall, the 20th was going to be the school improvement plan updates and then we're going to talk a little bit about attendance, budget. We kind of timed it that way, but we could make some adjustments as long as I have some notice. You know, I don't want to have the detailed conversation about Freetown Elementary School, for example, without Mike Ward being part of that or at least giving you that opportunity. We can get the answers, but if the chair and vice chair, as it gets to the point, I don't need to know tonight, but as we get closer to that, if you want me simply to reach out, I'll begin the process with my leadership team and say, listen, there's going to be some conversations you may anticipate, you know, I'll kind of predict what that will look like.
Listen, I think we can also be flexible if they're already slated to be here on the March 20th. Is that the, what you're saying?
That's, that was the original setup way back when, when we could make some adjustments there though.
Frankly, we could flip it and just do everything else as part of the budget, such as capital and then leave it to there instead of having them join both meetings. That's.
I don't know, kind of like the buildings.
All right. We could stick to the buildings from March 6th and go from there.
You couldn't go from that classroom teacher conversation and then push it back. I agree. Let's be honest, the meat of the budget should be, should be our schools, right? I mean, that's.
But I'm also trying to be respectful of their time too, right? So, not that we couldn't, wouldn't welcome more attendance at a school committee meeting, but so, okay.
I'll work with them.
Excellent. But this is, this is great. I think this is awesome as far as the initial review of that. I think it's very clear if we could just take the initial steps, both as the board to tackle the schools for March 6th and get the message out to the town administrators, the town officials, that here is the presentation for tonight. And then we can reach out, as Derek suggested, to Regional FinCom to get them the information sooner rather than later.
Town officials, we'll be, we'll be contacting town officials tomorrow. And if we need to live.
If the competition's not so long, we can do that. It's a good thing to start.
Yeah.
And we're going to roll that right out on the website. So parents and community, I'll put some of the superintendent's going on Friday. The strategic plan continues to stay there, so we are getting some survey results back as well. So I think things are progressing.
I would also like to, especially in the Freetown side, because a couple of members are out of town, maybe we invite the Freetown town administrator to Regional FinCom so that there is part of that discussion. Or we can invite both town administrators, that's fine. But I just, I don't want to have this separate conversation, at least have some representation from the two towns.
Definitely can do that.
Okay. All right. There are no reports to the committee. Do that. Subcommittee updates, superintendent evaluation.
I got nothing.
Policy, we are on hold until we get a little bit deeper into the budget discussion. And then Regional FinCom, because we didn't have a call for next Tuesday, we moved it And then Regional FinCom, because we didn't have a plan for next Tuesday, we moved it out to the 28th.
Oh, is that what happened?
Yeah. Any other business that's come to the meeting?
No, it's just, I would just simply note that March 6 is going to be a doozy, right? I mean, we got the budget, school choice to vote on, school calendar for 19, 20, it's being rolled out.
Yeah.
Sensitive, I just, you know, so.
I think if we, if we pare it down and we talk about the schools, I think it would help in that process.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we don't need to be here all night.
No, I mean, and you'll get the calendar in advance. I'm not, some of those other topics are important topics, but they don't typically spend, we don't spend a great deal of time.
No. Upcoming dates, obviously we have the summer vacation and then we've had the invite from Dr. Korea about the music fest on Friday.
Yeah, so that's our second annual music fest, which is being held at the middle school, starting at 8:30. I'm going to kickstart that. We have quite a few students.